Questions, kind of fleshing some stuff out here on that. Trying to go into this with an open mind. You know, I asked previous meeting, you know, more about it. I'm trying to do my own research and with an open mind and, you know, just trying to, I guess, understand the benefits of the DIE. Everything that I see really, it's the criteria that is being used. And I've looked into both Alberto Ramos and Andreas Mahia. You know, the criteria is really these immutable characteristics, gender, sex, sexual identity, race, kind of at the expense of merit. So I'm, it's troubling to me, the more that I research this. And so then I was looking a little bit further and as I stumbled upon Andreas Mahia, I really do believe he has a conflict of interest to be coming as a speaker to our teachers. And the reason is because he is currently a sitting board member of the Seacoast Black Lives Matter chapter, which is a political organization. So my objection would be that it is politic, that he's a very political person that we're bringing into an apolitical environment. So I would actually like to make a motion to uninvite Andreas Mahia. If there are contractual obligations to pay him, obviously, we would do that. But I would like to motion that we uninvite him based on his compromise, perceived belief of a conflict of interest, that I would not want to endorse as a school board BLM and have, have that be, again, something that we would be endorsing politically. So I have, that would be my thought. I did.
Discussion.
And for what seems like a very nice guy. I mean, but again, I just believe a conflict of interest is something that we don't want to, I don't believe we should be endorsing that. I know a couple of years ago, we were, this board was solicited by some, I don't remember if they were students, working with an activist organization that tried to get us to endorse BLM. And we unanimously rejected that because, again, we are an apolitical institution here and we shouldn't be taken sides in these political debates. I went to the Seacoast BLM page. They are openly, you know, endorsing candidates for certain races, you know, so they're very, very political, which is, again, why I would like to not have this gentleman attend.
Kyle, I understand your perspective and your reasoning to keep politics out of this. But I know I'm not prepared to support a vote in this manner unless I can research him, which I didn't, so shame on me for that. But also, I would want to have maybe the agenda or know a little bit more about what was happening during the training and what his role was in the training in order to make an informed decision. So I know I'm not prepared to vote in favor of that motion, but that's just my opinion or stance on it.
Where this is, where this is on the 20th, do we have an agenda yet? Or what the breakout sessions are that we can?
We do. We haven't received, I don't know that we've received their actual presentations yet. We have talked though, that we would have the presentations vetted through our legal counsel and make sure that what we're doing is on the up and up, that it's not political, it's apolitical. I've only heard and met, I haven't even met him in person, but have heard him speak. Andreas was with three other, there's only four diversity, equity, and inclusion staff members in public schools in the state of New Hampshire. Exeter is one of the school districts. Oyster River is another school district. Manchester and Concord are the other two school districts. And there was a panel of the four of them and I had heard Andreas speak. And it was not a political commentary. It was just about, again, the sense of people belonging in schools, belonging in communities. And so what his message is, I'll let Katie talk a little bit about that on the 20th.
Yeah, so his breakout sessions, so 45-minute sessions on intervening in the moment. So as situations arise in the passing of the hallway, how to handle that situation and you have a protocol. I had seen Andreas present at another conference this year already when he spoke about the work that he's been doing with his superintendent in Exeter. And I felt that the message and the approach was, was inclusive. And I felt like that was the approach that we were taking here in terms of fostering really inclusive and communities of belonging. And that's really the approach that we're taking in all of the sessions that we're looking to put together. And we certainly can share that agenda ahead of time, but the descriptions are being composed right now for all four of the sessions.
It certainly wasn't insinuating that he was going to come in spewing political ideologies. It was just more or less, when he took the Exeter job, he refused to resign from that position as a board member for BLM. So to me, it's ingrained in who he is. And so I think that there could be the perception from teachers or community members that, hey, we're bringing in a guy from BLM. And the perception is that we are endorsing that. So I just, I think there are other people that could probably speak to inclusive, I can't say that word in plural, inclusiveness, other than him. And I think we could avoid that perception that we are endorsing a political personality.
I think what's a benefit to having someone like Andreas come in is the fact that he's working in one of the public schools currently in this role. And so I think that there is benefit to bringing someone in who's doing that work actively in terms of, like, within the districts, creating those environments. And as I shared, there are few directors of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And the state has really, has taken them on board to make them resources to other districts because they're, they're in the trenches doing the work and supporting teachers. And that's something that we know our staff really would appreciate.
Certainly understand too, that blind, someone who is in the trenches in the public school doing that, and that there aren't a lot of other people that you possibly could have, you know, checked off those same boxes. I just think for this particular individual that the perception isn't something that I would want the district to endorse.
We had a similar situation. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we have to agree with Katie on this, that I think it's impressive that he is doing the work for Exeter School District. So it's not just like we're hiring somebody to do training from a political organization. This person has invested their career in working for a school district. And I think that that's an important part of this. And there's lots of people who work in our school district who also take part in political activities outside of their work within our school district. But they're able to check that when they come in to do the important work that's required in settings like this. I feel like we all do that. We accomplish that, even though we might come from different political backgrounds. We're able to come here and realize that it's a non-political job and not the need to show up and do what's right by staff and students and parents and taxpayers.
My example for our local situation involved a BLM endorsement by a teacher in the school. And my, my position on it, in our, from our board and with a lot of background researched on, specifically on BLM, is it's a highly engaged political organization. And if the shoe was on the other foot and pick your anecdotal organization, it probably wouldn't be supported or advocated for. The idea that inclusion and the BLM thought process can be separated is, isn't realistic because they're, they are part of the same fabric. So it's understandable that he is part of that organization. But that organization is outwardly and aggressively political. So if there's no balance to the, to the, or to the ideology of what is being imposed in the training or seminar, then it's, it's a problem that you guys really should wrestle with. And the way we dealt with it is we basically had to say, if you can't accept the alternative points of view, you really have to be apolitical. And, and school board is supposed to be apolitical. I understand Nicole's point quite well. We all have to be apolitical. But I believe the trainers of, the educators need to be apolitical. And this clearly is not the case. If Kyle was right, I agree with Jessica, that maybe more information, because I don't know the guy, but I will take your word for it if I had to.
But I think that when we went through our exercise in Gilmoreton, we went back and really dove in on, on the code of conduct, that all educators are, are, I don't want to say forced, but they must, thank you, are held to and are accountable to. That's the word, is accountable. And so if he is working in a public school setting, then he is certainly held accountable to those same standards. And so then that, that brings me back to Katie's point of if he's working in a public school setting and coming forward with this training, then he is certainly very understanding of what his responsibilities are in this training and, and what he needs to impress upon those teachers that are accountable to their code of conduct and what, what they have to be representing in their daily processes. So I, I think, I, I agree with, with Jessica. You know, I, I didn't, when I read through this report, I didn't, I apologize that I didn't come to this and say, oh, we're going to have a vote on this particular item. It just didn't jump off the page to me to say that. So I, I didn't research it in that fashion to go down that page. Not that I don't, I just believe what you're sitting here telling me, Kyle.
You can just go right on their website. He's on, he's a board director's picture.
Yeah, no, no, no. But I'm just, I'm not disbelieving, I'm just saying that.
I didn't do any research, it was pretty easy to find.
So I'm just not prepared to, to vote on, on his record. But, but in looking at it, I, I like Audrey's approach of, of saying, we can all sit through that training and, and call the timeout or ask for that agenda ahead of time and say, no, this is not for us, if, if that be the case. I think I'd, I'd rather go down that path than pull the plug on the training altogether. I don't know how you would get somebody else in. I guess it's my next question, like, what is your parachute plan if, if, if this were not?
It's Katie and I.
Yeah, that's my next question is.
Isn't the motion just to uninvite one of the speakers though, not, not to end the program? You're not, you're not a host of the program itself.
No, not at this point, Alex. It's just a one individual.
Sure, it's January 20th though, that's, I mean, so.
That's why I would have done a different, had a different approach.
Yeah, I guess it's come to us before. I don't know that we had the presenters, because I don't have the minutes in front of me, but I know that we talked about the training and the, what the training would be about on that day. And I, I could see how you're, it could be very problematic to find someone now to fill the shoes. I'm not saying that, I mean, I didn't do the research upon each individual. I didn't think we were voting on it. I just assumed it was kind of a update to the board on what we had discussed previously. So I'm not prepared to vote in favor of the motion tonight because I haven't done that. Not that I don't trust you, it's just, obviously, the district or the teachers feel that there is a need for this kind of training or the leadership team does, and they've advocated for it. And we've kind of supported it up to this point. So I would be in favor of seeing exactly what was included in it. Kirk said that they were going to have it vetted by legal, so that makes me feel more comfortable that it would be appropriate and not be pushing political viewpoints. I don't know about, that I can attend on the 20th, but I think that's also a good option that we could participate as well.
The only other comment I would give is that you're, we are not Exeter. So my esteemed colleague made the point, there is a code of conduct. I don't know what theirs is, but we do presumably know what ours is. And we are not them. So there's a reason, there's only four equity inclusion people in the state. And that's not because of finances, it's because we have different viewpoints on the situation, so. The code of conduct is for all teachers, all staff members of the state of New Hampshire. It's the same here in Guilford for myself as it is for the superintendent in Exeter, for the superintendent in Gilmoreton as well.
So how it related to our policy was not.
Your policy is different than the code of conduct for the Department of Education.
Thanks for making that point.
And I would also add that this is in line with our goals that we worked to lay out in the summertime. And this is just fulfilling those goals of what we want to bring to our district. So I would have to disagree with that it's not in line with what the vision is. This is something that we wanted to bring to the district. And I agree, it shouldn't be a political thing. And I trust that the people that we have coming to present, that our administrators have researched and invited to our district and going to vet the presentation, that they're going to deliver something that is beneficial for everybody.
Thanks for making that point, Nicole. That was a question I had, was when did you set the goals? And I'm a recent addition, so it was a summer goal setting for the board? In the July, I think it was, the Guilford Board takes the month of July and meets and generally talks about what the goals are for the, for the next year. And so that's when those goals were kind of come together or put together. And then I think it was approved maybe in September, by September, the goals.
That's good to know.
It was specifically diversity, equity, and inclusion as a first professional development?
It was professional development that included this type of training.
It specifically says diversity, equity, and inclusion in your goals. I appreciate you doing the research on it, Kyle, because I think that is incumbent on us as school board members to be informed about things like that. So it's a good debate.
The only thing that I would say then, yeah, okay, this was approved as a goal, doing more research since then, right? Didn't have these particular names in front of us at that point. So it's like, okay, new information's presented, new decisions are made then. So again, at that point, there would have been no researching this individual because we wouldn't have even known that that was a potential presenter. So that's the only thing I would, you know, kind of counter that with.
And I'm not questioning, I know that you are for any type of training that includes, includes these, I'm sorry, let me take it back. Not any type of training, but training that includes this agenda for diversity inclusion. So it's not a question of the training itself per se. It is truly just a question of the person that's presenting it, making sure that their political and moral compass is pointed in the same direction that our school district is in.
More or less. I'd say the more that I learn though, the less hammered I am with it.
The person or the training?
With, with DIE as a whole.
Okay.
Like I said, I will admit that prior to a lot of this, I didn't have a lot of the information that I've been, you know, looking at and seeing different school districts, what they've implemented. So as I look at more, the less thrilled I am. But to, to your point, yes, by and large, it's this specific individual.
Can we have that agenda before the January 12th potential meeting? Is that possible? So that way, people can do their research on that piece. And if we have to make a last minute, it will be vetted by the attorney at that point as well.
That, I don't think so. So a couple of things I'm thinking is, we could certainly get an agenda to you by January 12th. Having us pull out with somebody on January 12th feels like that's eight days out. That, there's no way we would find a person. It is most likely that we won't find a person to replace this person now. So, so I think it's probably best to just tell us now, if we're not going to have that individual, so that we can try to make plans to go forward.
Can I ask a second question? If we're most concerned with this one session, if I probably could, this is a session that he has already provided within his district, I could probably, I can talk with him about having that ahead of time, having that specific one vetted sooner. And potentially, we could have that one through maybe around the 12th, what day is it? If that's the, if that's where the majority of the concern is.
Well, I think perception is another big component of it, that he is a sitting board member of this highly political organization. So I think that's part of it, but I think, I don't think that would change my viewpoint on this particular individual. So again, it would be just the perception of bringing in this individual who is a, again, a sitting board member of a, I feel like I'm here to take my words, and just kind of just.
It's the person, not the training.
Yes, at this point, I'd like to.
We're going to go with 70, 70, 30.
And so, but I like what Audrey said about attending. I don't know if I can, but if you could, then obviously then, or if we can get an agenda or so on and so forth, that certainly would help me understand more and kind of put more of these puzzle pieces together to kind of, again, I'm learning, I'm trying to understand, you know, the whole concepts here and how it actually is beneficial.
Okay, so that's why my suggestion is the, if that one specific training is one in particular, that one we could probably provide you with ahead of time to preview before I can have everything compiled for the entire.
Right.
So would that be?
Well, I think that would be great, but I still think that I would go back to, if this training was being given, if the exact same training was being given by a different individual, my concerns would probably be to a degree. But I think that because the individual, I don't, I think it's almost irrelevant what the content is, at least in my perspective. And I know a lot of people that I would, you know, that parents and constituents within the town, would have that same perspective.
Katie, I think that would be appreciated, so that way the rest of us board members can do our due diligence in making sure that we're providing a proper training or endorsing a proper training.
Andreas, yes. Alberto.
Yeah, I think, I feel like we've talked about Alberto here several times.
About Andreas has been since the last board meeting. So that's why his name hasn't come up prior to today. This is our only full K-12 day.
It's really more or less about, if I'm understanding you correctly, and based on my own personal experiences with it when we were dealing with it, is to not be endorsing somebody who's got a component to their resume, basically, because of the potential impact or feelings of people on the other side of whatever argument that he's endorsing. Say, the police officers that want to be defunded by BLM or whatever. So do you, maybe, it's safe to say Katie didn't pick him because of his affiliation, I believe that. But it's a, it's a paradoxical road you're traveling on. How do you get the training without the trainer? And his resume is, is, is full of what it is. Do you make a statement as a board that says, you know, it's not an endorsement? You know, I, I don't know. It doesn't seem like you can cancel the training. The only option would be to uninvite him or maybe this is enough of a public statement that at least portion of the board doesn't endorse, you know, that side of his resume, so to speak. Just trying to give you a creative solution.
Well, I, I don't, it's not that I endorse him. I, I'm endorsing what the leadership team is recognizing as a need for training. And I, again, admit, I didn't do due diligence with researching the person. So I don't want it to be a message that, because I'm not willing to vote on asking him not to participate in, based on what I've learned tonight, that I'm endorsing his belief system because I do not.
I'll be perfectly honest in saying that the more I've learned about this diversity, equity, and inclusion, I, I don't endorse that training, actually. The more I learn about it, it does not give me the warm, fuzzy sense. I, I really, I wish I'd probably done more homework before now, but the past week that I've read about it, I don't really like what it's about. And I don't want to get too far into it, but, because I, again, I don't know enough about it, but what I've learned, I don't really.
So I think ultimately too, that's why we come together as a board. And that's why we make decisions as a group, because one of us can feel really, really strongly about something. Like, I've been the person that has felt strongly about it and you guys were like, no, it's not that big of a deal. And I feel like maybe in this situation, and that's okay, we're supposed to make decisions as a group. And so we do have a motion on the floor and it's like, I think it is good to decide this as a group. The training is coming up, the people are booked, and this is part of our teachers' calendar. This is something that they're depending on. If, if the board makes a group decision to cancel the speaker, then we probably should let him know far in advance so that there is a chance that we can get somebody else. Or if we want to move forward with it, then make a decision to move forward with it and go with the plan.
I, I, come listen, I, I'm with Nicole and Drew. I think that obviously Katie has gone through and, and listened and attended this training and has already previewed it. So it's not that she's going into this blindly. This is something that she purposely selected for our district, knowing that this is, would meet our goals. I think that if she can get the training ahead of time so that people can preview it and become comfortable with it, so that they can deliver the message to constituents and let them know that this is the message that is about to be delivered, that will make this all better for everyone else out there in the world too. I, I understand, we went through something in Gilmoreton. It's not, the message, I, you never want the work to be overshadowed by a piece of somebody's resume. And we went through this before and we had to pull the plug on it because it started to become overshadowed. But if that was a longer-term project, it wasn't just a one. But if that was a longer-term project, it wasn't just a one-time day of professional development. And so I, I trust in our administrative team. If we can get those pieces of information out, the sooner the better. And I think that there's a nice offset with Alberto Ramos coming as well. So I'm comfortable if our administrative team is vetting it through legal as well.
The motion on the floor is to uninvite Andreas Mejia. Sorry, I butchered that. All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion does not pass.
Pouring the border, please.
You had...
We had two abstentions, three, four, and one against.
You had two, yeah, you had two, two, four, one against, and four abstaining.
So two, four, and one against. Motion passes.
With abstentions?
Abstentions are a null vote, they do not count.
No, it's a null vote. Either yea, nay, or if you abstain, you abstain.
Yeah, it's a null vote, it doesn't count. A no, an abstention is a null vote. It doesn't count one way or the other.
Correct.
So the motion passes.
Correct.
Make another motion.
Can I just, I just want to clarify, because this involves money. So for Gilton, we would need to abstain because this is a district-wide money event. Correct, correct. Okay. I just want to put that out there to explain our abstention.
I wanted to, I wanted to be able to collect more information, but if that means disinviting this presenter, then I will oppose disinviting.
Have to make a motion? I make a motion to not uninvite Andres Mejia until we learn more information that Katie is going to get and provide with the board. Okay, I'm running that through my head on how that's actually a... I have a negative, so I make a motion that we keep, I'm rewording the motion. So I make a motion that we can keep the training for January 20th as is, with Katie getting us the information on the presentation by Andreas before we make a final decision on uninviting him. Is there a second on that motion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. I am going to be, and I'm going to apologize to the rest of the board and to the community, I'm going to be looking into more of the abstention piece to make sure that that was done correctly. I was trying to frantically type that out on my phone, it's just not. Because I want to make sure that that is done correctly, whether it's an official motion or a motion to redact your previous, I'm not sure how that is, really, truly.
So we will work on getting the agenda together for people's review, as well as present, two presentations, or maybe six presentations.
Thank you, Katie.
And does that matter just as a point of order? Because if it's true that the abstentions are null, then you have two, you have two opposing votes.
Right.
So with that, that's an interesting situation, okay.
Right, so that's why I'm unclear of if it's a, I redact, somebody's trying to redact their vote, or if it's truly another motion and the one with the majority oversees the previous one or their counterparts. That's what I'm unclear of.
And we didn't want to oppose collecting information about the speaker, which is why I abstained, but now I see that we had to put that motion, we had to oppose that motion in order to do what we want to do.
We'll get that answer as quickly as possible. All right, principals report. Okay. Quick research on Robert's Rules of Order, and that it looks like it is a motion to reconsider. It can only be made by a member of the prevailing side of a previous vote. If seconded and passed, it rescinds the previous vote and brings the motion back for discussion. That is what my quick research is stating. So you would need a motion to reconsider.
Need a motion to reconsider Kyle's original motion.
Of the prevailing side of the previous vote.
Why would you then have reconsidered if you were on the prevailing side? That doesn't make any sense. Quite, quite, and I don't think it off on a rabbit's trail, but do we even have a policy that says that we follow Robert's rules? Or we do?
We do have a policy. It doesn't say strictly follow Robert's rules, but it does mention, it does reference Robert's rules.
But we're not going to box, sorry, because Robert's rules for order, you know,
are very...
convoluted and dragged out, so I just want to make sure we're not holding ourselves to some standard that we're not meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Like I said, quick, quick look. I will absolutely be looking into it more. It's actually the first time I've had it happen in the five years I've been on the board, so. And I guess it just goes back to Nicole's point of, I thought we needed more information, and so that's why I abstained, because it wasn't clear on how to move. That is how I'm understanding how that works, by reading this. I'm welcome to share. You want to look at it?
I think the role of the board is area, and I think that being a day, that's all that matters.
But I also want to make sure that it's reflected properly and that we are following the proper protocols, so I'm a big firm believer in rules. Hello. So then, in that case, do you want to make an official motion to, or state that that was an official motion to rescind? Reconsider. My motion was an official motion to reconsider the previous motion. And I'm going to go with Nicole as second, but we don't have to go through the whole thing again. Director of Curriculum.
Thank you.
Great. Public comment a second time. Please state your name and your address. You guys know the drill. Does anybody would like to speak?
No, my name is not changed, still from Gilford. And actually, no, I did not expect to be standing up a second time. But given the topic that was discussed about BLM, I probably have more experience with BLM than most of you here, because I wrote about it a lot. And I will tell you that just off the top of my head, they start, before they wiped their first version of their website, which I saved off, started by three openly Marxist, trained Marxist people. They are against the nuclear family. They were race-based as far as oppressors versus oppressed, promotion of reparations, promotion of quotas, and defund the police, which I think Drew, you kind of alluded to earlier. I, we've had our run-ins with the person that was talked about earlier today. I have several writers who are down from that area. I think one thing that Kirk didn't tell you is that when there is a code of ethics, that's one thing, but there's also a philosophy. And every board has a different standing of philosophy. And we have seen changes over the nation where a board that leans this way has been changed to go the other way. Exeter is one of those that is very much in the DIE community, and that's why they have five, maybe six court cases against them right now, because they have deviated from HB2, which was the law passed two sessions ago. I want to say divisive concepts, but it's not quite that. But it certainly goes to oppressors versus oppressed in different languages. And I will say that Mr., and I can't, I always forget how to say his last name, too, but Andres Mejia, I'll stick with that for right now. There is a problem there, and I think, I didn't know this was going to come up, but I figured I'd step up. If I still have it on my backup drive, I have almost 500 megabytes of their instructional materials they wanted placed into the classrooms. I saved off their entire website. It's not a pretty picture. It is political. It is also philosophical. And I would be hap, if I can find it, I'd be happy to share with it, share all of it with you, as long as you folks have a place that I can upload it all to, fine and dandy. Otherwise, I'll put it in a Dropbox and give you access to it. It's a lot of reading. It will take you hours to go through it. It's not very nice in a lot of cases. So I will just throw that out there and leave it up to you folks to make up your own minds. However, I am going to reissue my right to know, which I sent out the first time when I heard about the Plymouth training. Because of this discussion tonight, I am going to write, do a right to know to include the agenda item, and I want a copy of the materials. I will write that up tomorrow, and I will send it to the school board. Because I think it's going to be very close to what would contravene all of the law within HB2. I will also say it's going to go against some of the ed rules. And I will state that Commissioner Frank Ettleblow has been on a search for suspect districts, actually to be plain and out there in front on the DIE battlefield. And he has pulled a couple of certificates. So again, I'm going to tell you, be very cautious about this training. I wish it would be, be put off, primarily. Secondarily, if you can postpone it until you can read more of their materials, because now that they were open about it, now they're not as open about it, but still making the same pushes. And again, I've got writers for Granite Rock that are living this and have for years writing about it, about what's going on in that district. There's a reason why the superintendent and the school board have decided to part ways after this year. And let's just put it that way. Parents are ticked. I could use a bunch of other words, but I think that one's safe to use here. So I think, Kyle, you are correct about that. There are other districts, once again, because education is political, like it or not. They're not happy. I would not be happy if I found out that staff members who were then teaching my child were using this philosophy without my knowledge. Yeah. We already saw what happened before. I'd do it again. Okay? I don't believe that as I originally read about it, it should not be allowed here in Guilford. I congratulated the school board back then, when they decided to turn down. Young ladies offered to bring in BLM materials into the district, and I believe that should happen again now. Just, I would ask as a parent to stay away from it. It's, it's insidious. Very smooth going in, but later on, it takes root, and it's not a good thing. And a lot of the nation is, a lot of school districts across the nation are in turmoil because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. Anyone else?
I can speak in public comment. Hey, how's it going? Chris Banks, now officially 17 Red Oak Drive in Guilford, New Hampshire, so homeowner. Finally made it back home. Thank you again, all of you. Please don't hold it in, let it out, sneeze. I think you're doing it the right way, so make sure that we're in public comment now. Kyle, I've got it covered. But yeah, for the point that, I think the point of contention that we were talking about over here, Andreas Mejia would be the appropriate. I've known many Mejias throughout my military career. I think the big point I'd like to make on this one is waiting for information about the curriculum will not change that individual's political affiliation, their seat, or whatever office it is that they hold within that political organization. So waiting out for the material won't change that, or shouldn't really play into the consideration of whether or not to disinvite this individual. Waiting for the material would only play into whether or not you want the material to be presented, irrespective of whoever's presenting it. So I think that's as far as I'd have to say for comments of that. On the robotics side, Tara, please get with me offline outside of this. Part of my military transition has been with ROB Space Systems. I believe they've done extensive work with the high school as well. So we just, yeah, yeah, he's working for us now. We just hired on an individual who was an Imagineer. He currently lives in California, and he worked on the robotic Spider-Man that does the whole acrobatics outside of there, works with artificial intelligence and robotics. Fantastic group. If you do have some more stuff that you want to tie in there, I do have an individual within our organization who can assist you in community outreach for, outside of that. I want to say thank you again, and we'll see if we can get you some tissues. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Being a former soundboard person for radio and for different events that we would attend and broadcast, I have three words. Eat the mic. Folks, I have tinnitus from working too long in data centers. Please pull those microphones really close. Kirk and Nin, you're really good, you're about two inches away, that's the way it should be, so that we can hear, because sometimes I can't hear you, Kyle. Audra, I can hardly hear you. Nicole, you tried to pull the mic in, but you had a very soft voice. And Amy, I couldn't hear a word. So mic discipline, please, going forward.
Don't worry, Skip, pretty soon I'm just going to attach headsets to them. You don't have to worry about that.
Plantronics work really well.
All right, enterta motion to go into non-public.